Okay, well, my clock is showing 6:02, so we're going to go ahead and get started today. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. For those of you who may not know me, I'm Melissa Marsh, the city manager. I am joined today with members of our DPS staff and DTE. This little bit of housekeeping is being filmed live on Facebook. It also is being recorded, so it can be shown later on our website. In case there are any questions that come up after it goes to council. I also would ask that any questions that you may have throughout the presentation, if you could enter them in the question and answer section of the presentation, then we will get to those at the end. There'll be a time for that, so we will be following up on those as well. So again, welcome. We have been presented with an opportunity from DTE to convert all of the streetlights in Madison Heights to LED. So it is very rare that you come across a project that really ends up feeling like a win-win-win. So this is one of those rare projects. If I can get my computer to work. So today, we're going to go through project objectives, and then we're really going to get into the project details. I'm going to introduce you to the DTE Community Lighting Team, talk a little bit about what that department does, tell you about the streetlights, the current format that we have, which are high-pressure sodium, also known as HPS, and how that compares to the LED lights. We're going to talk about the process and the timeline, the cost savings, and really why this is advantageous for the city to do it this time, and then address some of the questions that we've already received regarding light distribution and wattage of LEDs. So every year during the strategic planning process, the city really looks for ways to increase public safety. It's always our number one priority. We want to maximize our energy efficiency. We're trying to be more green, and we're always looking for operational efficiencies and performance. So it also happens to be an extra bonus that this will decrease our expenditure significantly. So one of the reasons to convert to LEDs are to attain levels of visibility, which enable motorists and pedestrians' ability to see the road geometry and obstructions more clearly. So we really want to stress that this is better lighting, not necessarily brighter. It's just different. It's easier to see. A reduction of street crime after dark, including things like car break-ins. And as I said a little bit ago, there is an annual savings, and it's a significant savings. It's $84,000 a year, which we will get into in a little bit about return on investment. There are also significant reductions in replacement and maintenance cost. So I am now going to turn it over to DTE to talk a little bit more about their community team and some of the technical terms of LEDs.
Thank you, Melissa. My name is Ray Zoya. I work at DTE in the Community Lighting Team, and we have two other members of the DTE team here with us today. Reggie Brown, who is the account manager responsible for Madison Heights, and Jennifer Whitaker, who is part of our Corporate Government Affairs group, which is also responsible for, you know, catering to the needs of the city of Madison Heights. A lot of people don't know this, but at DT, we actually have a community lighting department, and we have 30 individuals working in our department, and all their sole responsibility, all they do is to maintain the lighting system that we have with our customers. We do everything. We're a regulated business. We provide lighting for roadways, parking lots, parks. You know, our primary value is to provide public, you know, to enhance public safety and security. People don't realize this, but we have over 200,000 lights out in our system. And the majority of them are fed overhead, which means the wiring comes from a overhead-fed wire to feed the light. And in Madison Heights, the vast majority of those lights are overhead-fed. But we also have underground-fed lighting systems too, which are like decorative in nature and downtowns and such. We do everything. We design it. We construct. We provide all the operations and maintenance for our lighting systems, and we provide them to all of our, as we provide it to our customers. So we own, operate, and maintain. Eighty-two percent of all of our lights are with municipal customers, with Madison Heights being a major customer of ours. But we also provide lighting, outdoor lighting, to commercial and residential customers. It's a growing business for us, but currently it only represents about 18% of our portfolio. Now, our portfolio has been changing over time. The most common technology out there is high-pressure sodium or HPS, and we'll get into what that is in just a moment. But of the 200,000, 41% or 83,000 of those lights are high-pressure sodium. It's a very simple fixture. They have about a 20- to 22- to 25-year life on the fixture, and it's a very simple, low-cost option for most cities. Then there's mercury vapor metal halide. These are technologies that are starting to go obsolete. You can still buy metal halide, but you can no longer purchase a mercury vapor fixture. It's not commercially available. And because it has a mercury content, it's considered as a hazardous material, so we have to treat it as such. And originally, we had over 100,000 of these mercury vapor lights, but you can see over the last few years, we've moved that down to about 43,000, and every year, we remove 10,000 to 15,000 of the mercury vapor lights off of our system. The new technology is lighting emitting dials or LEDs. And seven years ago, we had less than 5,000 on our system. We now have over 73,000, and this year, we're going to add an additional 10, 10,000 to 11,000 fixtures, and it's quickly becoming a major part of our portfolio. Next slide, please. So what's high-pressure sodium? High-pressure sodium is a fixture that people are probably most accustomed to seeing throughout their life. It's been around a lot of years. It was common lighting. Cities across the country used high-pressure sodium lighting. As I said earlier, it's very low cost. It's a very simple fixture. It has a ballast, a bulb, and a housing. And the life of the ballast really drives the life of the fixture. Once the ballast fails, the fixture is replaced. It's very low cost. It's about a third of the price of what an LED fixture would be. And it's still a viable technology that you can purchase today. Next slide, please. Okay, what is LEDs or light emitting dials? So it's a relatively new technology that started to gain a lot of acceptance throughout the industry. Cities across the country are converting to LEDs. It's where the high-pressure sodium is a bulb. This does not have a bulb. It has a chipset. And the chipset is basically phosphorus on a substrate, and when you pass energy through it, it emits light. It's very low energy. It's about 35% more efficient than with a high-pressure sodium. But unlike high-pressure sodium, when the bulb fails, you replace it. LEDs, you don't replace the chipsets. You replace the whole fixture, and it has a life of 15 to 20 years. So if the city of Madison Heights were to move forward with a project with DTE, we're going to convert 100% of the lights in the city to LED. There's currently about 1,386 lights, which are almost all high-pressure sodium are going to be converted to a modern LED. We use a Liotech 58-watt and 136-watt fixture, and it really depends on which roadway you're putting on, which dictates which watt you install. Residential neighborhoods are going to be more 58-watt. Where your major roadways are going to be 136-watt. The key component to this is the color temperature. This is a true white light source. It's a 4,000 Kelvin, which is the industry standard across the country for roadway applications. And it's the most common that you'll see out in the field. This LED light source is going to improve the visibility for motors and pedestrians. And I think a key thing is, and I don't mention it here, but you're actually actually using less lumens than you would in high-pressure sodium to light the roadway, but it's a much better light. This project's going to take about four to six months, and one of the reasons it's taking so long, unfortunately, is there's high demand for LEDs. And currently, it takes, you know, eight to 12 weeks to get the fixture, and then once we get the fixture, another two to three months for our contractors to go out and completely replace the fixtures. DT Energy and the Michigan Public Service Commission still supports the rebates, so there's there's really good rebates, as Melissa will get into in a minute. You know, one key component here is there's going to be significant energy savings by the city. By them doing the conversion, it's going to result in 713,000 kilowatt-hours of energy savings or reduction. And when you compare it to something we all know, that's equivalent to 100 homes or multiple city blocks of energy savings. And then you'll see down below, this is a real-life picture of before and after of a city street that was high-pressure sodium. You see it got that amber appearance, and then you have the white light source in the LED. And, you know, you can see things better in a white light source, colors of vehicles, pedestrians. Things are more visible with that nice white light source. Next slide, please. Melissa, back to you.
So as we spoke about at the very beginning, this is going to produce a savings to the city. So the city currently pays about $420,000 a year in energy costs to run our current high-pressure sodium lights. After this project, we will pay about 335,000, so that's an annual savings of a little over $84,000 a year, which is significant. This total project does have a cost, and it's $412,000. But as Ray just talked about, there are currently energy rebates available for $33,773, which will bring the cost of this project down. When you divide that by the $84,000 savings, we have about a 4.5-year payback period. So that's significant, because after that 4.5 years, this $84,000 a year can still be spent on other projects throughout the city or other areas. So in five years, we will have saved $42,000 overall by doing this project now. But in 10 years, we will have saved $464,000 just on our energy savings. So this truly is a green project in more ways than one. I'll kick it back over to DTE to kind of explain how light flows.
Yeah, so this is just, this is actually from one of our fixture spec sheets for a luminaire that can be found on our website. It's the back page, and currently in the city, there's about, there's 707 of the 100-watt high-pressure sodium streetlights that are located almost primarily in the neighborhoods. They're going to be converted to a 58-watt LED. It's a lower wattage fixture for the application. You don't need as much light in the residential neighborhoods, because the roadways are narrower narrower than if on John R., for example, where, you know, you've got the major roadways, you've got 679 250 and 400-watt high-pressure sodiums scattered throughout. And we're able to satisfy the lighting requirements with 136-watt LED for these primarily, primary roads. And what the two grids are showing is kind of the light distribution pattern. And there's a little legend to the left there under foot candles, but the lighting, where the, I would call it the crosshairs, that's where the pole and the light is located. Most of the light is cascaded into the street. There's some light that goes backwards, but that's going to be lighting up sidewalks. And then when you do get to the black line, it's important to note that, yes, there's lighting at the black line, but it's about equivalent of lighting to moonlight, so it's very little light. And then there's also a 50-foot grid there that shows you about how far back that light goes. This is very important here, because LED streetlights, first of all, consume much less, fewer watts, and we put out low, fewer lumens per watt. The key point here is the directional nature of an LED. And a lot of people don't realize it, but you actually get more lighting cascading above and beyond the fixture with a high-pressure sodium than you do with an LED. And with LEDs, you use prisms that force the light directionally down to the ground. And where do you want the light? You want that better light source at the ground. So this is the key difference between a high-pressure sodium and an LED, and the way the light is put down to its source.
So that pretty much wraps up the presentation, but I did have one more question, Ray, that we talked about a little earlier that I didn't hear you mention, so I apologize if you did. But could you talk about the reflection up or the bug rating, as you so-called it?
Yeah, and lighting, lighting fixtures have a, it's a bug rating, and it's B is bottom, U is up, and G is, I can't, ground, I apologize, but the key one is U. Uplight. And with the fixture we're using on these roadways, there's virtually zero uplight. And that's important for those that are concerned about dark skies compliance and that. So it's not exactly zero, but it is almost, it's very close to zero. So that just supports what I had in my previous slide, which shows that all the light is going down to where it's needed. It's not going behind. I think B is behind. That's right. B is behind. U is up, and G, I think, is ground. But that's, that's an important point when it comes to those that are more concerned about dark skies. There's not a light, not a light shining up.
So we'll be opening up to questions. For some of you, I know, that are just joining us, and we have quite a few viewers on Facebook, so I'm trying to watch the comments on that as well, if you have any questions. Please enter your questions in the question-answer section of the Zoom meeting, or I will try to catch it on Facebook as well, although that gets a little tricky. Also, if the project gets approved and moves forward, you can direct any questions that you might have to DTE's Energy Community Lighting Department, so the information is on the screen. So we are going to stop screen sharing and take any questions that you may have. So I did have a few on Facebook while we're waiting. If anybody has any that they would like to put in the question and answer on Zoom. Will the parks and ballfields get these? So I'll turn that over to Sean or Corey.
Thank you, Melissa. Our parks that have streetlights, we have, nearly all of our city parks do have DTE streetlights in them. Those will be retrofitted to the LED. The light poles for the ballfields actually belong to the city. They are not part of this project, but that is something we've been looking at as funding allows them through the budget process to upgrade those as well. Those are currently 1,500-watt mercury vapor fixtures. They're still in decent shape, because they don't get used terribly often. They're used two or three nights a week, two or three months out of the year, and not on every night as streetlights are. So we would definitely see energy savings and increased light on the ballfield with that, but no, it's not part of this project.
Okay. And we had another question on Facebook about which streetlights are going to be upgraded. So this is all of the streetlights in the city. So the question specifically was to their neighborhood that currently has dark orange bulbs and doesn't give off much light. So yes, every streetlight in the city will be updated, different watts, as Ray talked about, versus road versus neighborhood, that your light will be changed. So I think that's most of the questions, because now I'm getting specific questions about streets. So this is all streetlights in the city. The only other question I have, and I'm not really sure what this would be directed to, but what is the warranty? So if a lot's installed and it doesn't work within a couple of months, how does that work, and how does replacement work?
So we purchase all of our fixtures with a 10-year warranty, but because they're DTE streetlights, we own, operate, and maintain. There's no cost to the city. If the fixture fails, once it's reported, we typically have a three- to five-day restoration period. The key note there is it has to be reported as failed. And the city has no obligation or responsibility to maintain the warranties. DT does all of that.
I think that's, that's all the questions I have on Facebook. I mean, are there, I don't see any questions in the question-and-answer session, so if there aren't anymore. Oh, I do have one more that says, will any lights be added? So the answer to that is no. This is a pure replacement. We're not increasing any lights. I don't believe. It's just a straight, if there's a streetlight there now, it will be replaced with LED. So one point I would like to make, I know there aren't any other questions about this, but if you're interested what this would be like, the city of Warren just went through a five-year phasing. Of course, they have many more lights than we do, so they weren't able to do this all in one project, as we will be doing. But they have managed to replace every light in their city with LEDs. And they started first in the neighborhoods, which were, they first targeted the higher crime areas and started there, and then they moved out through the rest of the neighborhoods. So I'm not sure if their project is 100% complete, or if they're still in that five-phase program, but, you know, that's a neighbor of ours. If you want to drive through and check it out, you can see exactly what we're talking about. So we do have a couple of questions now in the question and answer. Could new lights in areas be considered for neighborhoods with less optimal lighting? Not exactly sure what that means, but if somebody else knows what that means. We're not adding any lights, so.
Yeah, the.
The lights could be located in a different place. I think, no, but Corey?
Yeah, generally, we have lights at every intersection and on every street, and then we also have a mid-block, typically have a mid-block. So if there are any streets with, with more lighting or lesser lighting, I don't know about it, but certainly if there's one that, that you think is out there, bring it to our attention. But we feel that the lighting that we have out there right now, the existing lighting they have right now, with these upgrades, it's just going to be much improved for all of us.
We have another question. Approximately, how long would the project take to replace all the bulbs? I think you said six months, but, so let's pretend council approves this on Monday, the 14th. What kind of would be our timeline?
Once we receive the agreement from you, we'd start the process of buying the material first and foremost. Currently, we're seeing 10- to 12-week deliveries on material, and we're hoping that's going to improve, because we're desperately needing material. So that's three months. And then, once the material comes in, within a week, we mobilize our crews, and that's going to take about another 90 days to go through the city strategically and replace all the fixtures. So it's, it's going to be in that five to six months. So if we did this, let's say we had an agreement about October 1st, we would probably be done by the end of March, and we are not weather constrained. We do this work year-round.
Okay. I do have clarification on the last question. So once the LEDs get put up, will there be any type of lighting audit or anything to identify areas that are still need more lighting, where lighting might not be optimal and consideration for an additional lights in those areas? Corey, I think maybe that's you. I mean, that'll definitely be, it'll have to be taken into consideration throughout the budget process.
Yeah, we, with, with inspecting the lighting, it's sometimes difficult to do. It's a nighttime, obviously. It's a nighttime or evening operation. We try to do that during, when we're in for snow events. We typically drive through the streets, and at that time, we do perform audits occasionally each year to try to identify which lights are out, but we oftentimes rely on our residents to bring that to our attention. If there's an area that's dark, if there's a light that's out, a street lamp that's out, so we can, we can assess that and get it to DT's information. But as far as a lighting audit goes, we've got no immediate plans for that.
So if a resident lived on a street without a light at all, would they notify us, and what would be the process? We would consider that through the, well, we'd have to consider through the budget process and how that would work with DTE, but.
Yeah, so I would, my thought on this, Melissa, is that once DT comes through and they do their LED lighting improvements on it, we're hoping that that will correct a lot of the their correct illumination or darkness of some of the streets out there. So that's our hope and intent, and then after, after the LED improvements, we can, we can then talk about an audit.
Okay. I think there's one last question. So was 3,000K considered? And because of a lot of, a lot of studies indicate that blue light could be harmful at night, so was 3,000K considered at any point by DTE? You've muted yourself.
So we belong to other utility groups across the country, and 4,000 Kelvin, we don't consider to have a blue hint or hue to it. And it's been the industry standard, and we've kind of stuck with the industry standard. We know there are those that are interested in 3,000 Kelvin, but we still feel the light source is better at 4,000. It's a better source of light for the safety and security of. It's a better source of light for the safety and security of our residents, of your residents and your motors.
Okay, I don't have any more questions. I don't have anything else on Facebook, so I'll just kind of talk about the process. This is being proposed to city council on Monday, September the 14th, so that meeting too will be live on Facebook and on Zoom, so you're encouraged to attend that. And at that point, it will be up to council to decide if they want to do a budget amendment and move forward with this project or not. So that was the purpose of having the town hall before the council meeting, so we really could get the residents' feedback and answer concerns before council was being faced with that decision. So I want to thank DTE for their time tonight. Hope everybody thought it was useful. We did have about 25 people attending. There were anywhere from 15 to 19 people watching us live on Facebook and very interactive on there as well. I thought there was another question, but I don't think that there is. And then we had about five people joining us on Zoom. So anything anybody else wants to add before we go?
Yeah, there's one more question, Melissa. Where should they send concerns for areas with less optimal lighting? If they have a streetlight that's out right now, or questions or concerns about lighting, they can send that right to DPS. They can send it to my email or Sean Valentine's email, and we're on the City of Madison website.
Okay. Let me make sure we're not missing anything. No, I think that's it. So if there are no more comments or anything, we will adjourn the meeting for tonight. So thanks, everybody, for joining.
You're very welcome.